I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we start the agenda, we would like to take a moment to recognize a former Michigan Governor William G. Milliken, father of WCC trustee William G. Milliken, Jr. Governor Milliken was the longest-serving governor in Michigan history. His service to others politically, professionally, and personally was always of the highest priority, or highest integrity. He led by example and was able to find common ground between himself and others. He was a champion of a wide range of causes that increased the quality of life for all Michiganders. Each cause held a special place in his heart and mind. The state was very fortunate to have Governor Milliken at its helm for so many years. His generous spirit, graciousness, and ability to bring people together will be terribly missed. It is my hope that thousands of people who were privileged to know him will carry his legacy forward in their lives. He was a gifted teacher to us all. Please join me in a moment of silence for Governor Milliken. We're going to continue tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Mike?
Here.
Vice Chair Duncan?
I'm here.
Director Davis?
Here.
Secretary Eber.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Lea?
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda approved. Moving on to Tab A, the minutes from the last meeting. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of September 24th's monthly meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Shall move.
Any discussion on the minutes? Yes, Ruth?
As I was looking at Page 3, this is just an editorial suggestion. Under remarks of the Board of Trustees, it was talking about free speech and immigration, lack of minority. Participation, I think, is a better word than leadership. Because we weren't talking about leaders in the apprenticeships, we were talking about people participating in the apprenticeships. And it's again, in the next line as well, the word leadership. I think that's a better description of what we were talking about, Diana. Participation. Thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen participation. First up, the WCC EA, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
WCC EA really has nothing to report tonight. I do want to, however, on behalf of the faculty and personally, to express our condolences, Trustee Milliken at the passing of your father. I told you earlier a story, I won't bore the audience with it, just say that as a 12-year-old boy, I had an opportunity to shake his hand and it thrilled me then, and I remember it to this day. Only could vote for him once because I was too young, but I was glad to do so. Our deepest sympathies are with you, sir.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? If so, please come forward now. Okay. Seeing none. Vanessa, were there any written communications?
There were six.
Six? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to special reports. First up, VP Hearns on OERs.
Good evening. I'm just here to introduce Joyce Hummel, the Executive Director of Learning Resources. She's going to give us an update on the process, progress we've made so far in OERs. And I just have to thank her and her leadership in taking the torch from Victor Lu and really building a process and a program that's supportive of faculty, being able to develop so many OERs.
Joyce.
Thank you. That's very kind of you to say. And I actually have to say, it's all the faculty and so, and all of the people here who have supported this effort. So, thank you trustees for giving me this opportunity to come and talk with you a little bit about where we're at with our OER initiative. We kicked off 20 by 2020 in the winter of 2018. We had a total number of cohorts now that have completed that process, the three cohorts. From those three cohorts, we have developed 17 new OER materials, or OER courses, for the college. In addition, just because we have had an ongoing conversation about it, we've had three additional faculty members who have stepped forward and created OERs outside of the cohort model. This brings our total, although we are completions now, to 20, which was our goal for 2020. So, we're feeling pretty good that we're a little ahead of the game here. This year's cohort, made up of Anthony Terry, Halid Mansour, Maria Ortega, and Cheryl Byrne, have completed these courses in BMG, CPS, Psychology, and UAS. I did want to make a note that the Psychology course was one of our MTA courses, which is part of our goal, so that we can get more OERs into the MTA courses that we are offering.
Would you mind explaining what those courses are, rather than just the initials?
Sure. It's a business management course, 101 and 109. It's a two-part course. Entrepreneurship? Thank you. The CPS course is the Computer Science courses. And Halid actually has been one of our star producers. He has produced for the CPS 271 and 272. He also did ones for Computer Science courses that were prior to that. Maria Ortega is doing the Psychology 100 course. And the UAS course is...
A supervision course.
Supervision for the union. Thank you. Year to year, it's really important that we take a look at where we've come from and where we've gone to. When I began, we were at, we had $1,790,000 worth of savings for our students in total. In academic year 2017 and 18, we moved to $2,178,531. And in academic year 2018-19, we added an additional amount to bring us to $2,796,650, or a 28.4% increase for this year. I just was talking with the finance guy and I was like, "I'd kind of like that return on my money there." So, I wanted to kind of put this in some perspective, though, for our students. If we think of our students having to pay $800 in rent, we have saved, we have the potential of saving our students 3,495 months worth of rent, or 291 years of rent. And I divided that 100 times because I kept thinking, "That can't be right." But that's a big savings for our students and a wonderful potential. Our list is getting so long now, we're going to fill our screen and it's almost unreadable. But it's really a testament to the faculty who have worked really hard to bring OERs to the forefront for our students, who have worked on developing, creating, and adopting OERs for their particular courses. That said, the work is not done, and we are starting another cohort in January. We're moving to a January-to-fall cohort process. And we already have two faculty members that have signed up for this next coming cohort, and three that have expressed interest. So, the optimist in me believes that we'll have five new OERs by the end of this year. The OER campaign continues, though, and I kind of feel like we're not there yet. So, while we've made some great strides, we've decided we needed to have a new goal. So, our new goal is Z degree by '23, which we will kick off at the in-service in January. Z degree means that students will be able to complete an entire degree here at Washtenaw Community College with zero cost for their textbooks. This is, this will give our students a competitive edge for student success, and we believe it is very possible for us to make this goal by '23. Can't say enough thanks to the Board of Trustees, to President Blanca, to VPI Hearns, for all of the support that they've given this particular process and this particular program. I also cannot thank enough the faculty who have stepped up and have been very interested in making this happen for our students. If they didn't step up, we wouldn't have all these new OERs for them to take part in. So, with that, I welcome any questions, and I thank you for having me here tonight.
Any questions? Go ahead, Dave, and then Ruth.
So, when these OERs are done, can, is it just the certain professors that develop them that use them, or do other professors use them?
Other professors can use them, and the way that we have it set up is, we provide an incentive for the, of course, the professor that creates it will put it into all of their sections, but we're providing an incentive for other sections within that particular department to also adopt that particular OER. So, it's created, in most cases, it's creating not only the textbook itself, but it's also creating the accessory materials, and the PowerPoints, and the assignments, and things that go along. It's kind of a package for the whole system. There is no requirement, because faculty have autonomy in their individual sections, but many departments, the faculty are adopting the OER across.
And one other question. I remember when we first talked about this, there was a possibility of the same course or the same sorts of courses at other campuses, not just WCC, to be able to access these and make use of them? Is that happening?
Right. So, there is a way for us to upload OERs that we may create from scratch into the MCO system. At this time, the ones that we have, which are very few, we, very few of them have we created from scratch, we have not uploaded them to the MCO system. However, we've pushed very hard that we adapt and adopt existing OER materials rather than work from scratch. So, for example, OpenStax has a number of OER materials that are already vetted, have been created by University, Rice University, and we've been pulling those and trying to really adapt those to our particular classes.
And it's not a two-way street, though? We're just pulling and not placing materials?
At this point, we have not had faculty that have wanted to upload theirs. But we are, we always keep that open and we push it, you know, as a possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Ruth, did you have a question?
It's a hard question for me to even ask. If somebody wants to do an OER for their class, how much time and money do you think it costs to do one class?
So, this goes to the adapt, adopt, or create level, okay? So, there, that's why we've been pushing for the adoption or adaption of existing materials. We have it set up that we have these three, about half-day sessions where we draw hands-on from the beginning to the end. In between that time, though, we do anticipate that faculty will spend, you know, a couple of hours probably, meeting with the librarians, gathering their materials, creating a draft, and then coming back to this half-day meeting. It is a process, and they do get a small stipend for being a part of that particular process. The idea we had here, though, was that to create a process where they can have a cohort of colleagues to work with to try and make it happen.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Are there costs to us for rights acquisitions for materials that are included in the OERs?
No. Everything that we include in our OERs are completely copyright-free, and so, everything that we do is pulled from the Creative Commons, has a Creative Commons license on it, or is past the expiration of copyright timing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next report, Dr. Morrison with the HLC update.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'll be providing you your annual Higher Learning Commission accreditation update. And this is an especially big year, as we are preparing for our reaffirmation of accreditation visit in 2020, as you can see up on the screen. So, tonight's update, we'll be talking a little bit about the background for accreditation and what's involved in the process for reaffirmation, and the HLC criteria for accreditation that we are preparing to demonstrate compliance with. And I will give you an update on progress for the Reaffirmation 2020 Project. And finally, what's next over the next few months? The Reaffirmation Project culminates in March of 2020, when our peer reviewer team will be here. So, we'll update you on what's happening between now and then. So, about accreditation, a refresher course. As you know, accreditation is required for us to be eligible for Title IV Financial Aid Funds. And the Higher Learning Commission is one of six regional accreditors that is recognized as a gatekeeper agency by the Department of Education. And by that, we mean they are designated as kind of quality control for the Department of Ed. And as our creditor, they're validating that we meet certain standards. And by being accredited, therefore, we're able to allow our students to take out federal financial aid. Accreditation is voluntary. We don't have to do it, but as I just said, if we didn't do it, our students would not necessarily want to be here, because they would not qualify for financial aid. And you'll hear more about financial aid later tonight, from our Director of Financial Aid, Lori Traut. And finally, the chief mechanism for maintaining accreditation is peer review. So, our peer reviewers who'll be here in March will be faculty and staff at institutions that are like us, and here to look and see what we're doing and offer consultative advice. So, the Higher Learning Commission has their own mission statement, which I would like to share with you. And that is serving the common good by assuring and advancing the quality of higher learning. And this is something that they have really talked about a lot in the last several years. They really are committed to helping institutions improve for the sake of their students and their communities and the constituents that they serve. So, that is something that we really want to keep in mind as we're working towards reaffirmation of accreditation. And just the term reaffirmation, as opposed to reaccreditation, is a change in the way the Higher Learning Commission talks about accreditation. You remain accredited, but you're reaffirming that you're keeping the high standards and providing quality programming, education, and services to your students. So, the reaffirmation process, those of you who were here in 2009, 2010, when we went through it the last time, will remember the big gigantic self-study, which was a hard copy document that we sent to the team members and had them come on campus, a large group came on campus. And that has changed. It is still a tenure cycle, but it now has multiple parts. And the first is the assurance argument, which is a relatively brief analysis, a narrative showing how we meet the HLC criteria. It has to be linked to documentation in an evidence file. And all of these things are done electronically through HLC's electronic system. And this is done in years four and 10 of that tenure cycle. We did not do that in year four, because this was a new process not long after we went through our 29, 2009-2010 cycle. So, we were waived the first time around. So, we're doing it for the first time in year 10. The second part is a federal compliance filing. And this is to show that we meet standards of the federal government. And this is done in year 10, also electronically. The third is a quality initiative, and we've been talking about this one for several years. For us, our quality initiative is the Assessment Academy. And this happens approximately the second half of that tenure cycle. And this is really a big opportunity for improvement and engagement on campus. And as you've heard from the Assessment Academy a few times here, that has really been the case with the work that they've done. They've engaged faculty around assessment and really helped promote some really good work there. And finally, peer review. Peer reviews happen of the evidence file, and the assurance argument, and the federal compliance filing. And that happens from a distance in year four. In year 10, they have a comprehensive visit here on campus. And that's what we're looking forward to in March. The five criteria for accreditation, you should have a copy of the full set of HLC criteria. And I'll give kind of a condensed version here, just a quick review. The first is mission. And really, what they're looking for is, is our mission public? Is it understood at the college? Does it guide what we do? Does it align with the programs and services that we provide and the diverse populations that we serve? Does it show commitment to the public good? And this is not exactly what you'll see written in the criteria, but I'm kind of summarizing a lot of verbiage that's under each criterion. Criterion two is integrity, ethical and responsible conduct. And really, it's demonstrating just that. Do we act with integrity in all of our functions, in our personnel, our finances, our academic, our auxiliary functions? Do we follow policies and processes that ensure ethical and fair behavior on the part of everybody on our campus, from really from the board on down to all of our employees? Do we ensure freedom of expression and the appropriate acquisition of knowledge among our students and our faculty? Criterion three and four are really the heart of the criteria, because they both focus on teaching and learning. Criterion three is teaching and learning quality resources and support, which is really about what we offer. We offer high-quality education. It's appropriate to our institution. We offer general education with our degree programs. And we have the faculty and support staff to support what we're offering. And then Criterion four, teaching and learning evaluation and improvement, is how do we know what we're offering is high-quality? How do we evaluate our programs? Do we review our programs? Do we assess the outcomes of our student learning, which is a really important aspect of what HLC looks at? Are our students learning what we say they're learning? And are they succeeding when they leave here? And finally, are we looking at things like completion, and persistence, and retention? All of those things go into Criterion four. And you'll notice that HLC uses language in Criterion three. The institution provides high-quality education wherever and however its offerings are delivered. That's also important to HLC. It doesn't matter whether it's here on campus, at an extension site, in a high school, online, if it's 15 weeks, seven weeks, it should all have the same level of high-quality and qualified faculty and support services. So, that's something that's also very important. And finally, Criterion five, resources planning and institutional effectiveness. Do we have the resources to support what we're offering now and into the future, physical, financial, and human resources? Do we have good processes in place to sustain what we're doing? Do we plan for the future, and do we continuously improve what we're doing? A little more detail, each criterion, if you look at the full set of criterion, you'll notice each criterion includes the broad statements that I just showed you, as well as core components, which are more detailed statements, and some include subcomponents, which are statements that really kind of describe how we meet the core components. And to be reaffirmed, we need to meet all five criteria. And to meet each criterion, we need to meet all of those core components. So, what's been happening, these are some recent contributions to the reaffirmation effort. It really takes a whole campus to do this. And some of these are ongoing things that really are going to help us when we tell our story to HLC. Tenure is a long time. It's a big span of time to talk about, especially with all the changes that have happened on our campus, or really, any campus in that amount of time. So, a lot of really great things have happened. Faculty and staff, professional development, the tremendous growth of professional development on our campus is really important, the development of the Teaching and Learning Center. Contributions to campus-wide student success goals, retention and completion goals. Program review, that is an HLC mandate that we have program review. Vice President Hearns has put a system in place that the department chairs have, you know, have really worked hard to make successful with her. Faculty credential verification, that's also an HLC mandate that we've made a lot of progress on. The Assessment Academy and Curriculum Assessment, both the Academy and our Curriculum Assessment Committee have really led the charge with our faculty in moving forward and constantly improving on our assessment of student learning outcomes. Our general ed has been revised and improved, and we've assessed that new format of general education in the last year. And momentum on other significant initiatives all across the campus, things like new programming in our healthcare area, the ATC. There are lots of examples that you can probably think of off the top of your head, of things that have happened in the last few years that we look forward to telling HLC about. So, last summer, we had held faculty-staff Criterion workshop teams that met several times to do deep dives into the criteria, and did brainstorming and provided input into what evidence we might need to provide for the evidence file, which was really, really helpful, because it was a cross-campus group. So, we had many different perspectives. They did the same thing with evidentiary statements to help provide some kind of drafts that would inform the assurance argument. And finally, they provided input and planning into a campus engagement plan for this coming January. And then behind the scenes, this all started about two years ago with a resource group that was primarily the vice presidents to brainstorm what evidence would we need. And since then, we've had an HLC roadshow. I've met one-on-one and in small group meetings with a lot of people, collecting evidence and reviewing criteria. We are still developing the evidence file. It is now up to over 7,000 pieces of evidence, and putting that in the assurance system. And we've been drafting the assurance argument. We have a separate federal compliance team working on the federal compliance filing. And we are working on campus engagement planning, starting in January in-service. We'll be starting a campaign to inform faculty and staff what to expect, especially once HLC is here on campus in March. And what's next? In November, those faculty-staff Criterion groups will meet once again for some follow-up work. Ongoing, the Assessment Academy team continues to work and engage with faculty, along with Curriculum Assessment Committee are also engaging with that work. In January, at in-service, we will start our Showing Good Work campaign and get information out about the upcoming visit. And ongoing through February, continued evidence collection and preparation for the assurance filing. And then finally, March 23rd begins the comprehensive visit by the HLC peer review team. And the final outcome? Reaffirmation. Any questions?
Go ahead, Diana.
I remember, it must have been in 2010, when they were here, and some of the peers from the committee met with the board. Is that going to happen this time?
They will almost certainly ask to meet with the board. We don't know the team yet. We haven't, we haven't gotten that information yet. But they typically do ask for a meeting with the board. So, as soon as we know what, they request the meetings of us. So, as soon as we know, we'll certainly let you know.
How many will be here?
We don't know that. It will either be five or seven.
Five to seven. Okay. And they're here for the whole week?
No. They're here, it's the 23rd through the 25th. The 25th, they won't actually be on campus unless they have some kind of follow-up. So, the 23rd and the 25th, or the 23rd and the 24th, they will definitely be on campus, possibly the 25th, if necessary.
All day?
The 23rd and the 24th, yes.
It will be all day?
The 24th will be the heaviest day. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, I think I'm, I am the only one that was here for the, for the last HLC. Well...
Well, you weren't on the board, but I was here.
But you were faculty, right? But I am the only one here on the board that was a board member at that time. I just want to say that the, everyone on this campus was so engaged and so helpful. And everyone did the utmost, for me, they did the utmost job to make sure that we were reaccredited. And I have faith that this will happen again. And I just want to say, based on Dr. Morrison's report so far, this interim report, I'm quite sure it will be, because everyone has, have been working on this. And this is not something you just start in a year. This is something that is an ongoing contribution. Even though we're going to be reaccredited, it continues after that. This is just start. So I want to say thank you to everyone, faculty and staff, and all of the leadership team for their wonderful work that they're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next report, the grants awarded to WCC, AVP Snyder.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today to give the annual update of our grant activities. I wanted to actually start by just pointing out in sort of a mission statement that we have. The foundation works along with the college to try to identify funding sources very strategically to help to achieve our priorities and goals. We were very careful and try not to exhaust opportunity costs by going out and just firing all over. So we take the review with the vice presidents, Dr. Blanca, our development committee of the board, of my board and the foundation, and look over very carefully and submit high opportunity costs. I'll give you a quick overview of some of the organizations, public and private, that are funding the college today. You notice there's a bunch of national organizations like NSF, the United States Department of Education, Labor, and Transportation. We've got some of the state, and then some locals, including the Coordinated Funders, which we'll talk about in a second. And also some collaborative grants that we receive through various universities. So I want to talk quickly about the new grants, the new revenue we received during the year, coming up to about $300,000. You can see a new award there that was received through University of Michigan to provide Chinese courses to our students, Chinese language courses, and a smaller one that the group that funded us really asked us to submit. And it was kind of a shoo-in, and we got it. But we also received some increases when we were renewed. And you can see there's five different funds there that were increased. And we'll look at actually what we received in a couple of slides. Yes?
Are those the total we received, or is that the increase?
That's the increased number. But like the Perkins received an additional 66 motorcycle, addition 58, yes.
In addition to what we?
To what we, yeah. Now I'll go through each one of, coming up in a slide or two. We have a good number of multi-year grants that we've been, we applied for, and we've been administering. The advanced technical education, you'll see who's overseeing that. I've listed the staff or faculty and the total award. Trustee diversity, that's there. And then the revenue received, and the faculty or staff that were funded through this program. The lightweighting materials is a very, very important program we have here, and we'll continue to seek out funding as we go forward. You've heard a great deal about the CCAT program. We've purchased a good amount of equipment, important to our advanced transportation, advanced technology, and also to improve our teaching. The Parkside Center program, funded by the Coordinated Funders, is a really, really competitive program. And we were really delighted over the last year to have received this one. We're serving at the Park Ridge Center, some after-school programs, some summer programs. It's done through a consortium of donors, including the United Way and the county and the hospital systems. And it really is a very thoughtful process done by community leaders, and we were very delighted to get it. We've already been told we're going to get year three. We've already just done one. And they told us two is in and three is coming as well. They love what we're doing at the program, at the Park Ridge Center. You'll see the STEM, the STEM program is going to be a long-term program for us, and that total award is large, and the revenue's going to be received over the years. And the scholarships for STEM students are going to really pay off.
Do you want me to wait until after he's completed his report for questions?
Yeah, let's hold questions.
Okay. Thank you.
The, we had some revenue come in for two programs here, but I still wanted to report it in full disclosure to make sure that the trustees knew all the amounts of money that were coming in. Two programs that have ended now, we received some additional end funding. And I wanted to point out that East Asia Language Program ended, but we've now applied and gotten another grant, and we'll start it again. The LSAM program, large and important, over 400,000, 100,000 came in. One faculty's receiving a stipend and six part-time positions being funded through that. STEM fields, high school students, it's really very important for our future and where we're certainly heading as one of our main priorities. The youth bill program just ended, the federal program through the Department of Labor. They've, they've completed the work they did in the community and the educational program. We're still, we're finishing the tracking of the students, but the program was successfully completed, and we received the last nearly 150,000 during the year. We also had in the year, the fiscal year, 2.7 million of renewed grants. And as we showed before, we got some increases, but the adult basic education core, 16 part-time staff, it's a very, very important program to both the community and to the college, the way we support that and bring students along to finish that program. The Perkins vocational, again, supporting students in materials and received money for two full-time staff and 14 part-time staff. The job seekers throughout three counties, or four counties, is 10 full-time staff and two part-time, and through the Department of Labor and running the Michigan Works offices. Motorcycle safety is a popular community program. 16 contracted instructors and one part-time staff are funded through that annual program to train motorcycle riders. And then the, the small business development in five different counties hires four full-time staff throughout the, throughout that grant. Youth in transition for our students coming out of the foster care system, being renewed, but we receive revenue of a little under 113,000 and one full-time staff who coaches the youth in transition students was made possible. Wrapping up all those programs, 17 full-time, part-time, 45 faculty receiving either part-time or stipends, and then the contracted instructors for motorcycle training. You can see the wrap-up there of nearly, a little over 3.7 million dollars in funding, mainly through government sources to support all these programs. It's about the same that we've had over the last three years. We've had some programs come in and some programs go out, but we've held just about that annual revenue figure for the last three years. And I'm going to turn over to Dr. Hearns for just a brief presentation on the impact of these grants.
So we just wanted to share a couple of highlights. We talked about the grants, but we also want to talk about just kind of what happens to some of the grant money and the funds that comes from those grants. You all have actually met some of our students from our STEM Scholars Program. And that program is definitely a program where we are very proud to have built a really strong learning community and a comprehensive program that we're working now to build, what we like to say is into the DNA of the campus and to make it a real program. They're actually also working now, VP Blakey is assisting them with working with the high schools to do a very, very comprehensive STEAM week in February and bring in pipeline of high school and middle school students. So that program is actually, the foundation of that is from our STEM and our LSAM grant. And we're already trying to figure out how to work that into kind of what we do here permanently at the college. The ACE, the Academic Cyber Educator, which you all have seen here at a board meeting, that came out of our CCAT grant with the University of Michigan. And that definitely is a piece of equipment that we would have not been able to afford or partner with a company like Grimm, had it not been for that grant and that relationship with the University of Michigan. And that has definitely helped change the dynamics around our cybersecurity program and how it's being taught. Also, Phil mentioned the lightweighting work that's being done with the NSF grant. And again, that has realigned some curriculum, which is a definitely consistent outcome out of a lot of our grants, where the faculty are acquiring professional development and making changes to the curriculum. And that lightweighting one is one that was highlighted. At the bottom of the slide, I just kind of got a list of things here. Here is a list of equipment. Our Perkins grant is something that we get annually, but it definitely is a grant that allows us to afford a lot of state-of-the-art equipment for our occupational programs across the board. In addition to that, it allows us to afford faculty going to a lot of professional development to kind of keep them up to speed in the areas and the industries that they're working in. In addition, the Perkins grant also supports students through attendance costs. So childcare, books, tutoring, all of those things support our occupational students. And they're actually participating in programs and attending here while they're completing their certificate and degrees.
Diana gets the first question.
Okay. I wanted to go back to Park Ridge. Let me see. I think it was Park Ridge. Oh, yeah. You said that some of the coordinated founders, or funders, excuse me, United Way and Washington County, and you mentioned hospitals.
Yeah.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, the, the systems, especially St. Joseph and University of Michigan, contribute to a community fund to try to advance things that are important to all of these communities. So, but the, sort of the interesting dynamic there is, they're all donors, so they're all involved in the decision-making, which makes it really a long, interesting process. And it's highly competitive, but it, they have a stake in it, in the community. And they absolutely do, on every two-year basis, make donations, mainly coordinated through the United Way.
Well, I'm asking that because if the hospitals are involved, which is south side of Ibsy, and there's a lot of, you know, low income there, are these, well, U of M particularly in St. Joe, have they decided to set up like a clinic there for those, the people who are there?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. They're community clinics. I'm sorry, it's out of my...
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go too deep into that.
I don't know the answer to that.
But it's a question that could be possibly looked into if they're willing, or can they do that, set up a clinic maybe once a week in that area?
So I think that is a good, good comment. Coordinating funding, it's not led by us.
Right.
We have, you know, it's just that coordinated funding that the United Way gathers all the money. So they really kind of, you know, it's something we could suggest to them, but it's not something that we...
We do, right.
We just apply, right.
Right. But that's something that could be, you know, explored.
I can already see Valerie agrees with you. Brilliant. It's a beer.
I mean, even, even, maybe some of, your nursing students could go over there and, you know, and work with some of those people with childcare, or just, you know, little simple things, colds or whatever, you know.
Dental students?
Dental, yeah, I thought about dental too. Well, I'm talking about in that particular area, so we don't have to drive out from that area. Now my sec...
You have another one?
Yeah, I do. All right. My next one was the multi-year grant. You're talking about the Lewis Stokes Alliances for Minority Participation. How many students do you know are in that?
Right now, 36. Last year, 18.
So it, wow, it's increasing. Increased. And where do you get these students from?
Susan Denteo goes to the high school. She walks around campus. She does marketing. She actually has been recruiting a lot of the students, just one-on-one. Some of the students are our current students. This year, we do have some WTM C students. So it's a, it's a lot of different ways. She's very active in the county STEM work, has been working with VP Blakey during outreach in high school. So it's a variety of places.
Oh, wow, that's great. But you, now, is this the first year for this?
This is the second year.
Second year, so we don't have like a completion?
Four students graduated last year.
Well, that's, that's good. That's good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Milk.
May we circle back to the Chinese language classes, please? Yes. Are these classes very subject in Mandarin, in Chinese, or are we teaching the language?
Just basic language classes.
So this is learn to speak the language?
Yes, just learn to speak the language.
Okay.
And that's here on campus?
That's here on campus.
How many students will enroll and have those classes?
Well, up to 24 could, but right now, I think we probably got about maybe 10 in the current class.
Well, you got to start somewhere.
Yeah. We've had Chinese for a long time.
We have, but this, they're working with, U of M is using us kind of as a pipeline partner in this program.
It's our credit, credit Chinese.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes, there was another one. Renewing annual grants. You have employment services for job seekers. Who are the partners with this? Who are we partnering with? That's Michelle?
This is the one that's with accounting, with Michigan Works.
It's with Michigan Works? Okay. And do you know the, how many people are in there?
Oh, there's probably, I want to say eight, about eight different people, because it's throughout the region, that are, end up being employed at the various Michigan Works centers throughout the region.
So it's not just from this region?
So it's a Jackson Center, it's Washington, Hillsdale.
Hillsdale, Benoway, okay. Okay.
Did you have a question, Ruth?
With respect to Perkins grants, are they granted based on a kind of formula of how many students, or how do we get that grant? What's the criteria?
The basic is how, how many students we have in occupational programs.
Right, right.
And how, the size of the school as a whole.
And completion as well, or not?
They are moving, and in the last legislation, they're moving at more performance.
Yeah.
So in the past, it hasn't been as heavy on performance as far as the indicators, but they're moving closer to looking at more performance metrics. And completion is a big one.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Two things. One, on the Perkins information, I try to go to the legislative, the Association of Community College trustee meeting where we do legislative lobbying for educational stuff. And Perkins is always on the agenda for when we meet with our legislators. And last year, we had a great package of information, the impact we had in various areas. And it would be great if this year, when we go in February, I think it is, if we have some specific information on the Perkins program and what the funds mean here in our, in our various counties that we serve. And, yeah, since they are looking more at performance criteria and completion, any data we could have that would be, look favorable to that, because that's the kind of thing we could lay on the desk of the legislative, our representatives from Michigan, who we will visit with, and they can be our advocates to get more, if there are specific things that you want us to ask for as part of the Perkins program, those are the kind of asks we should make directly, specifically to our legislative representatives. And then the second thing, on the funding, I note, most of them are governmental or educational institutions. Do we work, or do we have any? I know Kresge has substantial private nonprofit grants available, specifically in education. That's one of their priority areas. And I actually know somebody who works in that area for Kresge Foundation. Are we approaching or looking at some of the grant opportunities with Kresge catalog, or catalog? Are we approaching or looking at some of the grant opportunities with Krezge catalog, or Kellogg?
Krezge for, for sure. I met with their president, Rip Rabson, to discuss. I know two other officers as well, and told them, they, they indicated to me that, um, we don't quite fit, but we know how to get there, and we're working that out. Uh, the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, the Kellogg, Kellogg changed a bit of their, their, uh, ways of giving out grants five years ago, and we're working into it. They, they serve counties like Washington, especially in, well, they're, they're coming here, but they want, uh, more insalanti, insalanti township. And as our programs grow and we're able to show that we can replicate and expand, we fit them beautifully. And we're going to continue to speak with them.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions on this? Go ahead, Ruth.
I just wanted to thank you. It's very clear and thorough, so I appreciate the work that went into it.
Thank you. Up next, the annual student and financial aid report, VP Blakey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's, it's October, so it's time to talk about the annual profile and the fall profile. This report's gonna highlight the booklet that you have, that's the annual profile. And then Lori will talk about the financial aid, and then we'll talk about the fall semester. So the enrollment profile covers all data that's reported to the state. Um, the fall enrollment will be based on the official federal count date, which is October fifteenth. And the infographic, which is in your report, kind of gives you a nice kind of summary. Um, and this report tonight will just cover some highlights. So for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we had twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four students enrolled in credit classes. That's the unduplicated headcount for fall eighteen, winter nineteen, and spring, summer nineteen. Students could have rolled in one, two, or all three of those semesters. So it's the unduplicated number of students that we served. There was a hundred and thirty-eight more, or one percent than the prior academic year. We had eight thousand forty-seven new students, so our new students were up over two hundred. Um, and it was a three percent increase over the prior academic year. So if we look at, again, annually, our minority student enrollment was thirty-two point two percent. That compares to a minority composition in a county of twenty-seven point seven, based on the last census. Our male students increased by eleven, so that's, they now comprise last year fifty-one percent of our students. And our female students increased one hundred and twenty-seven for the last academic year, and they comprise forty-nine percent. That's the same, uh, male, female ratio that we had in thirteen fourteen. So if we look at the educational level that the new students are coming in with, um, we had a six percent increase in the number of college graduates who are coming in as new students. That was an increase of eighty-seven. Uh, we had a four percent increase in the transfers from four-year universities. That was an increase of ninety-eight students. And now ten percent of the new students who enrolled last year were duly enrolled, currently enrolled, high school students. Um, it's, it's important to note that fifty-seven percent of the new students who enrolled the last academic year have prior college, either graduates or transferring from two or four-year institutions. If we look at the age, these are the categories where the increases, where we had increases, um, in the age categories. So for students that were aged seventeen and below, um, that increased five percent. Um, students aged eighteen to twenty in the last academic year increased one percent. Um, students in the tw- thirty-five to forty-four increased ten percent. And students in the forty-five to fifty-nine age group, um, increased two percent. Uh, there's two categories where we had, um, decreases of two percent. That was the, um, twenty, twenty-one to twenty-four, and twenty-five to thirty-nine. So again, annual, if we look at the types of classes our students are taking, so for the twenty-one thousand, ninety-six students who were enrolled last year, um, fifty-eight percent of those students took face-to-face classes only. Um, nineteen percent took DL or online classes only. And twenty-three percent of the students last year took a mixture of online and face-to-face. So again, if we look at last year annually, um, our distance online learning, our enrollments were over nineteen thousand. That was an increase of five percent from the last academic year. Mixed mode, which are classes that are half in-person, half online, um, there was thirty-four, over thirty-four hundred enrollments. That was an increase of one percent. If we look at the students who are taking classes in DL and mixed mode, those enrollments comprised thirty percent of all enrollments for the academic year. And that compared to twenty-eight percent the prior academic year. Um, of the hundred and thirty-five certificates and degrees that we offer, um, forty-six or thirty-four percent are available on an online mode. If we look at our non-credit enrollments, um, last year, those were nine thousand three hundred and ninety-one. That was a decrease of two percent. Um, we offer courses in the non-credit areas in forty-seven subject areas. But the five subject areas listed here comprised forty-eight percent, or nearly half of the enrollments, were in these areas. If we look at the awards that we gave on the last academic year, our total awards were over four thousand, four thousand twenty-two. Um, we had twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and thirty-four certificates. That was down a little bit from the prior year. Um, we've had a big focus on completion and students completing their degrees. And so we had a fifteen percent increase in the number of associate degrees that were issued, uh, fourteen hundred and eighty-eight over the last academic year. And we continue to give, uh, issue a lot of MTA certificates. Macro, this is the last year that we'll be able to issue macro certificates, and those are for students who were enrolled much earlier. And we also are seeing big increases in our trade partners. So we have programs that we do with UA and our other trade partners, and we've seen big jumps in our construction supervision, industrial training, and journeyman industrial. So those are really good things to see. If you look at your student infographic sheet, you can see that the first two columns on both sides cover a, kind of an overview of the annual numbers. And the right column on both sides covers the fall nineteen facts, which we'll get to a little bit later. Now, I would like to introduce Lori Trapp, who's our Director of Financial Aid, who will go over the financial aid profile.
Okay, good evening. So for the eighteen nineteen academic year, the financial aid office gave thirty-two million, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to students. The number of students for the eighteen nineteen year was six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. Students receive some type of financial aid through our office. That's twenty-eight point eight percent of WCC annual credit students. But if you look at it by semester, it's a little different. It's more like thirty-seven percent for the fall and winter semester, and then it drops down to about twenty-three percent for the spring, summer semester. Of that amount, approximately eleven point six million dollars of financial aid was used to pay tuition this past year. An additional nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars was used to purchase books and supplies at the WCC bookstore. Financial aid comes from different sources, four different sources. Fed, from the federal government, through the state, WCC, and external. And just a little note about external, when we talk about that throughout this presentation, that does include the foundation. So for the federal, we had almost twenty-nine million dollars that came from federal funds. For the state, this is the first time ever we've gone over a million dollars in my career here with the college. That's one million, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and three dollars. The college gave seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to students, and through external funds, one point three million. And we're gonna look at each of those. But first, we're gonna talk about the different types of financial aid. Again, four types, grants, scholarships, loans, and work-study. You can see we're about fifty-fifty between the grants and the loans. Grants are fourteen point six million dollars, scholarships just a little over two million dollars. The loans are fifteen million, and work-study, two hundred and four thousand dollars. The federal financial aid, that is twenty-eight million, nine hundred and nine thousand dollars. Thirteen point one million dollars of that is the federal Pell Grant. Fifteen million is student loans. If you look at the pie chart on the left-hand side, we, that's two different types of loans, the unsubsidized direct loan and the subsidized loan, making up that fifteen million. We have a small amount of funds that parents borrow through the federal plus loan, the parent loan for undergraduate students, that's a hundred and nineteen thousand. And then I grouped together, um, some other smaller grants, the Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant, fostering futures, and the Perkins funds that go directly to students through scholarships. That's four hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty-nine dollars. And then again, there's that two hundred and four thousand dollars in federal work-study money. So of those, of that federal work-study money, sixty-eight students received those funds for eighteen nineteen. They have various jobs on campus, I've listed just a few. Media services, adult transitions, the International Center. And then we also are required to use some of our, our federal work-study money for community service, and we do that both at the Harriet Street Center and the Parkridge Center. At Parkridge, the federal government also likes us to use some of our community service funds for tutors. And we tutor youth in math, reading, and writing at the Parkridge Center. And you can see there, I've listed out some of the other things that the work-studied students do, supporting the community partners. They recruit other WCC students. At the Harriet Street Center, they do the fresh, front-desk coverage, um, monitor the computer labs, assist with job searching. So the state of Michigan, again, I said that went over a million dollars for the eighteen nineteen academic year. That's a twenty-three point eight percent increase over seventeen eighteen. The primary reason for that increase is the tuition incentive program, or TIP. We are up to nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. That's an increase of thirty-one point two percent over seventeen eighteen, and a sixty-two and a half percent increase over the last five years. We've had a decrease in the Michigan Competitive Scholarship, that's gone down nineteen point one percent. But over the last five years, that's actually increased over a hundred percent. WCC scholarships. So, um, we have several high school scholarships, just to remind you of those. There's the Presidents and the Procasini Scholarships. Those are six full-time tuition and book scholarships, and they're given to each public high school in Washtenaw County. And they're renewable for a second year based on academic performance. And then we also have the Excellence Scholarship, which is a three thousand dollar scholarship that we give to fifty students each year. Those students can come from any high school, it may be an international student, or international student, yes, or homeschooled. Four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-five students received seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars directly from WCC. We had a hundred and forty-seven high school graduates who were given just over half a million dollars, and an additional eight hun- eighty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars was given to students for their books. There are other funds that the college provides to students that aren't included in the financial aid profile. We fund Ameritas students, and that total was four hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for last year. Of that amount, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars was for credit classes. We also, um, provide the Livingston County Scholarship, which is for students who are taking classes at one of those extension sites. They get twenty-five dollars per credit hour. And then we also supplement the amount between the in-district cost and the out-of-district cost for tuition for students who have work or property in district, or for our partner high schools, if those students may be from out of county. External sources for eighteen nineteen, this is where we get to talk about all the great work that the foundation does. That is over, was over one point three million dollars last year. Nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars were given to nine hundred and sixty students through the foundation. That is an increase of six point nine percent over seventeen eighteen. These are funds for tuition, books, childcare, and other educational expenses. The remaining amount, the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, are external scholarships to a hundred and seventy-two students. Those are funds that come into my office through a check, um, from maybe local civic organizations. We actually get a lot of funds for Native American students from their tribe. They will be given scholarships and just many, many different types of scholarships. So talking a little bit more about the, um, foundation, they continue to have the emergency fund. There is a committee of staff from the foundation, student services, and the cashier's office that help determine eligibility, along with someone from my office. In eighteen nineteen, ninety-one, ninety-one students received just over twenty-one thousand dollars. Since the inception in the winter of two thousand seventeen, a hundred and fifteen students have been given over forty-five thousand dollars. And that comes via Kroger cards for food or gas, they pay utility bills, car repairs, that type of things. And they also refer students to other agencies or resources. And then the Finish Line Scholarship, that was a new scholarship. We talked a little bit about it last year at its inception, but now we have a little bit of data. So it was a new scholarship for eighteen nineteen, and we reached out to students who had completed seventy-five percent of their degree. Um, they had to have a two-point oh or higher, and they were no longer enrolled in WCC. Uh, we reached out to two hundred and fifty-three students. Of those two hundred and fifty-three, seventy-eight registered for classes. Of that seventy-eight, forty of those students received a degree or certificate. Pretty successful there. Um, and we continue to offer loan counseling, we talk about that all the time. I'm proud of the work that we do in our office. We offer entrance counseling to new borrowers and additional loan counseling to half of our returning borrowers. For last year, we had almost two thousand students who we saw in person for loan counseling. For that additional loan counseling, uh, we do take students into a classroom setting with computers. They log in, they look at their debt. They look at their debt, and then we bring them over to where they will see what their payment would look like for that exact debt that they have. We have them go online through some searches and, for their career, look at how much their income would be. And then we kind of do the math. So how much are you gonna have left, and should we still borrow just as much? So we have seen a decrease in the amount of, just see, we have seen a decrease in the amount of student loan debt. Um, it has gone down by about nineteen percent over the last four years. And I like to attribute that to the, a lot of the hard work that we do in the office with the students one-on-one. Through that, um, experiment with the Department of Education, which is how we are able to do that additional loan counseling, we do have to report back to the department. This will be the second year that we'll be sending information back to them. I've listed out some of the things that we will be sending, the amount of financial aid, their direct and indirect costs, and credit hours that they have attempted to earn, and they're, attempted and earned in their grade point average. And the thought is that the department's trying to see, does this additional loan counseling help lower the amount of debt that students are having, and also help with repayment down the road? And then for our infographic sheet, the left side, just like the, um, sheet for the enrollment figures, the left column are the eighteen nineteen facts, and the right column are the fall twenty nineteen facts. Oops. Oh, here's the, sorry, these slides got a little bit out of order. So this shows, um, the loan volume and the decrease that we've had. For eighteen nineteen, we're at just over fifteen million. If we go back to fifteen sixteen, we were over eighteen million. And that is that decrease of nineteen point three percent, or three point six million dollars over those, that number of years. Okay, and then we talked about the infographic. That's okay.
We had a few little slides we added on.
So, um, now we're gonna talk about the fall profile, which is the other booklet that you have that talks about the fall profile. Um, it's based on the official count date, which was October fifteenth, which was just last Tuesday. So, um, our new students, um, for the two, for fall two thousand nineteen was three thousand, four hundred and fifty-three. That's up, um, twenty-eight or point eight percent over fall eighteen. The applicant to en- enrolled rate increased because we worked really hard for the students who are applying to, um, Mika and her staff were working really hard to get those students to actually complete their admission process and enroll. So we saw that rate increase from thirty-eight point six to forty-two point one, from fall eighteen to fall nineteen. Our continuing students enrolled declined by two hundred and thirteen, or three percent. Um, we attribute that to a good economy, economy locally, but it's also with our focus on completion. We have students who are finishing up their associate degrees and, um, going on to either jobs or transferring. Because you saw, um, in the annual that our associate degrees increased fifteen percent. So for fall nineteen, we had twelve thousand, forty-five students enrolled. That's down about two hundred and ninety-two students, or two point four percent. We have ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six credits. I want to provide some historical perspective, um, on the fall semester. So if we look at fall headcount, and we look at some of our sister institutions, went back about fall two thousand twelve. So that was after we had, you know, the big, you know, nine and ten, and eleven, we had those kind of big enrollments from No Worker Left Behind, and a lot of the plants closing. So twelve was kind of where people were getting back to their, kind of their normal enrollment. So you can see from our... So you can see from our sister institutions, those, what the fall headcount was and then what those enrollments were for fall eighteen for those institutions. You see that six-year percent change. All of those institutions, except Washtenaw, had double-digit drops. Some of them as high as thirty-seven percent. We worked really hard to keep our enrollments up, and we know that with, it's a challenging environment with high school graduates declining, but, you know, we knew that this little dip was going to happen. And then the fall, and the last column is the fall eighteen to nineteen, what schools are reporting right now in terms of the drops that they're having. So that's on top of the drops that they've already had. So I wanted to put, we don't like having a decline, but it's, I think it's good to have some perspective on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to explain the sizes? Because I thought that was interesting today when you showed me that.
I'm sorry, you told me that.
You know, the change, you know, Delta.
Right, so Delta.
Where we were in two thousand.
Right, so if you look at two thousand twelve, there was many institutions. Grand Rapids, Henry Ford, Lansing, that were much larger than us. Seventeen thousand, nineteen thousand students. Those students, you know, now Henry Ford and Lansing are comparably sized to us. Oakland dropping off ten thousand students, they had twenty-seven thousand, they're down to over seventeen thousand in terms of their headcount. So this is all fall headcount data. So I think it's really, it's just good perspective to have. So fall nineteen, if we look at the mode of instruction of what kind of classes students are taking, sixty-five percent of the students this fall are taking face-to-face classes only. Eighteen percent are taking our distance learning classes only, and seventeen percent are taking a combination of face-to-face and distance learning. Our distance learning online enrollments continue to increase. They increased by two hundred and six over last fall, that's a three percent increase. The number of students taking DL courses has increased by a hundred and forty-one to over forty-two hundred students. Our out-of-district students who are taking distance learning and our mixed mode classes, which again is about half and half, increased by ninety-five over last fall, that's a four percent increase. Out-of-district students comprise forty-five percent of the students taking DL or mixed mode classes. Our duly-enrolled high school students continue to increase with our high school partnerships that increased a hundred and twenty-seven to over eleven hundred, nearly twelve hundred students. The top five feeder high schools for all of new students, and this would be students who are coming in as duly-enrolled or regular new students, adults, high school age, are Huron, Brighton, Heartland, Dexter, and Celine. The feeder calculation again is based on, includes graduates, adults, and duly-enrolled students. If we look at our dual enrollment partners, these are our highest list of the dual enrollment partners. You can see we have seventy-five students from Islandi Community Schools. WTMC for fall has four hundred and sixty-nine students. They're much larger than that, that's how many students are enrolled in credit classes right now. They tend to have students be, come in and do just a semester or a year. Their enrollments will be higher for the winter semester when those students transition to Washtenaw classes. Manchester continues to be a good partner with us. They use a lot of our online classes. They put a pair pro in seventh hour and have students take a variety of classes. Howell is part of our middle college programming with Livingston County, so those students are taking classes with us. And you can see Unionville Seabewing, which everyone knows, is up in the thumb. And so those students are a middle college, but the middle, the closest community college, Delta, is their partner. But that's a forty-five-minute drive for those students, and so they take advantage of our online enrollments. I think it's interesting to note that last year, WTMC comprised forty-five percent of our dual enrollment students. That now has dropped to forty. So that speaks to how many additional dual enrollment students we're getting enrolling. So some of the fall enrollment strategies that we've used, that we've kind of increased, we, you know, continue to have events. We have a lot of increased marketing, including social media channels. We have an increase in our dual enrollment. We have more online late starting and accelerated sections that we're offering to a variety of populations. We did upselling, which means if we had a student that was maybe in six credits or eight credits or ten, we had specific upselling messages from the deans to encourage the student to add a class, to increase their credit load. And we did a lot of outreach via texting that was successful. I want to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting all of our enrollment initiatives. Special thanks to Kathy Curry and her staff for getting the profiles done, especially fall with such a tight window. Kudos to the marketing staff for the infographic and the really nice covers on our, on our books. Winter registration is right around the corner, it begins on November sixth.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Tell me about veteran recruiting and counseling. I didn't hear veterans in our mix as we talked about student makeup.
So we have, we do have veterans, we have a veteran center. We're encouraging them to enroll. We have had a little bit of a drop-off from our veteran students. But we do outreach in different ways. Sometimes through the hospital, the students come through the hospital sometimes. And we also have two partnerships with the VA. One providing mental health services and one just providing kind of VSOC support, which is basically just continuing ed support. And so they provide an advisor on our campus, you know, once a week. So those students, they also bring students through that method on our campus.
How many are enrolled and over a several-year period? What kind of trending are you seeing?
It's been, we've had some increases, and then this last year, we've had a little bit of a decrease. But I can get those numbers for you.
I'd be interested, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
I, I, I'm looking at dual enrollment partners, but I don't see Ann Arbor schools in this list.
Yes.
So they're not interested?
Okay. Ann Arbor is not, Ann Arbor is not a dual enrollment partner for us. We, I will tell you that we have a lot of students that kind of individually come in and enroll. But in terms of partnerships with classes, we, it's kind of more onesie twosies where students and their parents are kind of coming in enrolling. The schools are not really pushing those. We are developing a new partnership with Celine. They've, that's also been a school that's not been really interested in dual enrollment, but they're looking at trying to figure out how to have students graduate early in their trimester and having us offer classes to meet those students that would basically keep them enrolled and get college credits basically after they've graduated from high school before they're starting their other college career.
I find that, you know, after all these years, I find it totally absurd. After all of these years, successful program here at WTMC, and a lot of it has to do with counseling. That's the bottom line.
I, I think it also has to do with the messaging from administration in terms of support for dual enrollment. Because, you know, I, I'm friends with some principals that would, I think would like to do some partnerships, and they don't get a lot of support from, from some of the administration.
Any other questions?
I guess you pick your battles.
Sorry?
I said, I guess you pick your battles.
Is this something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this something that's been going on for a period of time?
Since we started, since we've started. So that's what I'm saying, after all these years. Since we started, when we tried to initiate it, they were totally not in favor of it.
Nope.
We make little inroads with little populations.
A little bit, right. And I do know that.
Okay.
One more thing, I do want to come up with historical perspective on the fall. And you mentioned Lansing. I do know, speaking with one of the trustees from Lansing, stated last year that they had a total of three thousand, three thousand drop in headcount for that last year.
Mm-hmm. And there's been some serious, really serious drops.
Right, they're having a real hard time.
Right. Right.
Go ahead, Dave.
So I note that we had on this, the first batch of statistics, fifty-seven percent of new students have some prior college.
Correct.
So over forty-five hundred, which is pretty substantial. And I'm wondering if that, to me, that indicates potential fertile ground to recruit new students. Students who have, I don't know from this if they're people that had college long ago like me or people that maybe had some community college in a different county.
It's everything. We have students who were at, just came out of a four-year school, and it maybe wasn't a good fit, and now they're coming to us. We have students who maybe went to college twenty-five years ago and are coming back. So it's a variety of students.
Are we seeing any trends? Like, are a majority of those coming from nearby or from? I'm just wondering if there's some potential there. By looking closely at that data, we can identify places we could recruit students from other colleges. I know we have cheaper tuition rates than a lot of colleges.
Correct, and we're also looking.
So that gives us a recruitment advantage.
Right, and with our online offering, sometimes that works better for those students. And we're also kind of focusing on completion. So if they can transfer those credits in, they're going to have a head start on completing their programs.
Right.
Sometimes we'll have students who are college graduates coming in, and they may be picking up just a few classes because they're applying to graduate school. Or we also have students who are college graduates who maybe got a degree in something that they can't get employment in, and now they're coming back for some more technical training so that they can get a better paying job.
Trustee divert, that's a good point. And it's one of the things that we're looking at is that. And developing strategies, that's a very good point.
It's a large number now.
Yes, and it is growing.
To me, that indicates that there's a lot of potential there.
Yes.
Because we're already seeing.
Right.
A larger number of.
Because sometimes those students are going to the four-year institution, sometimes it's too costly, and then they're coming back to us, or it wasn't a good fit for them, and they're coming and taking classes with us. So again, we're helping them try to figure out how to get their programs finished.
Go ahead, Diana.
Can I ask two more questions? On loan counseling, it kind of struck me when you said, you know, you're still, you're doing counseling. And I do remember when the feds said that they wanted it stopped, the loan counseling. So how is it that we're starting to do it again?
So we do two types of counseling. Entrance counseling, every borrower for whom it would be their first loan, it is a federal requirement and has been ever since I've been in financial aid, that they have to do loan counseling. And we've always chose, well, not always, but for the past probably eight years, we've decided to do that in person. So we have to, every new student has to do, every new borrower has to have in-person loan counseling. The second piece that we are doing with our returning borrowers, we signed on, last year was our first year. Seventeen eighteen was our first year where we signed on to be part of an experiment with the Federal Department of Education. And as part of that experiment, they are letting us give loan counseling to fifty, additional loan counseling to fifty percent of our returning borrowers. And then, and then we send data back to them on all of those borrowers, on both the, all of our returning borrowers. Both those that we give the counseling to as the treatment group and those who are not getting the counseling as the control group. And then they're gathering up all of that data.
Okay. I, I just remember through the sessions, you know, of, that, that had been there, and I had documentation in that it had been. It's been a few years back, so that's why I was bringing that up.
Okay.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad that it is being done again.
Yeah, students are amazed. They log in and they see what their loan debt is, and for some of them, it's the first time they've seen that total. You know, because they borrow, you know, a semester at a time, year at a time, and then they see that.
Just like getting credit cards for the first time.
Yeah, exactly.
Not for me, but otherwise. My second, my second question is, I don't think we really got into it, and I don't know if I'm jumping ahead here, but on the focus on completion, associate degrees, oh, wait a minute. The continuing, continuing students enrolled declined by two hundred and thirteen. Are minorities a part of this decrease? Or you're not sure, this is just a collective number?
That's, that's across the board.
Just across the board.
Continuing students who are previously enrolled within the last two years who are not enrolled for the fall semester.
Okay. I'm bringing this up because I know the last time I saw your, your report, it, it had where minority males were declining and females. And that was so alarming for me to see this. And I haven't had a chance to go through this yet, but I'm just wondering, has, do you know that's increased? Or is it increasing, going up? Especially for females, it's always been there, but to see the females dropping off is really alarming. And but it also could be, like you mentioned before, it could be from employment.
Employment, right, and students completing, because we're getting a lot more students who are able to finish up their degree.
Mm-hmm, all right. But I, I guess that still is my issue here of how we can maintain retention of minority students. That's, that's the issue.
And I think we have some programming, we've had some really good success with brother to brother and maintaining those students, those male minority students and maintaining their enrollment and retaining those individuals. So that's been a really successful program.
Great. I do, I am familiar with that, okay. Thank you very much, it was very good.
Any other questions on the board? Go ahead, Dave.
This is another issue from the legislative, the annual legislative gathering of the community colleges. One of the things that was emphasized last year is changing metrics that require, that are really hammering colleges on loan delinquency. So if, if you have a large amount of loan delinquency, they're kind of punishing the colleges. In fact, they're asking for money back from the colleges. And that's happening at the federal level, and of course, we were briefed on that and asked to lobby about that as well. Do you have numbers? I know you're doing the loan counseling. Hopefully that has an impact, a positive impact on loan delinquencies. Do we have numbers on what our, what our loan delinquency is?
So it would be.
The students that have come here, how much they might owe in subsidized loans, particularly in federally subsidized loans?
So in total, I don't have that number. Do you mean for all of the students who've gone here?
I'm just, kind of.
Who are in repayment?
All right, I'm, I'm just looking for something to be able to brief our congresspeople, especially if we have congress, Michigan congresspeople who are on education committees, that we could brief them on numbers that show that we're having a positive impact on reducing loan delinquencies, that we're working on it and we're having a positive impact. Because that's the kind of thing that we can put in their hands and potentially create some, maybe impact their ability to get more federal support for loan counseling or more resources devoted to reducing this delinquent loan debt. And that's any data we could have by February that could be put in our legislators' hands, I think would be really useful.
We can certainly do a deeper dive into this data that we're reporting back to the Department of Ed now that we will have two years' worth of data, and we don't quite have the data from eighteen nineteen altogether yet. But I can take a closer look at all of that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this report? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. All right, moving on to tab B, the monthly reports, personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second?
Scored.
Okay. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations? Or do you want to add anything VP Daltrey?
No, I just, we'll note contrast from last month's report, where of course we had significant volume to coincide with the beginning of the academic calendar. And of course, this month is quite light, two new full-time hires, one of which has joined us, if we could introduce him.
That's what I was just asking, Bill, would you?
Sure, I'd like to introduce Craig Whipstock. So Craig is our new ADP for facilities. This is his second day. Craig comes us from, most recently from Detroit Medical Center. Seven years as the Director of Facilities, managing all of their hospitals, facility operations. And he has an associate's degree from Schoolcraft College in Engineering.
Yay!
He has a bachelor's from Wayne State in mechanical engineering and is finishing up his MBA from Donna College. So we are very glad to have Craig, Craig aboard. And he's just another member of a very strong team with the facilities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any questions or comments on this? No, okay. All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to tab C, the financial report. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for September twenty nineteen as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Support? Thank you. Any discussion on this? Do you want to add anything, VP Johnson?
Please. Just a couple of points. This is the first financial report for the current year, fiscal '20, for the board. So it's the first three months in here, so you've got a, get a good peek at the revenue, the base on revenue and, and expenses. Just a few things to point out on page two. You'll note, and this coincides with what VP Blakey just went through regarding the fall 19 enrollment. We are down a bit, about $256,000 in enrollment tuition revenue dollars. We had assumed about a 1% decline in enrollment, and it turned out to be, so on credit hours, about 3.3% decline. So that $250,000 is roughly the difference between the 1% decline that we had assumed and the 3.3%. The good news that offsets that, the tuition for spring is actually up. We had a nice, strong spring semester this past one that just finished up. And also, the board might recall that we actually started that semester one week later. So more of that revenue is now being recognized in the current semester versus the prior year. So the net impact of that is about a wash. So that's the positive news, that we are about a wash. Another thing that I, I would point out is that state appropriations is that the governor did sign the Affordable Limited Degree in College Act, and we ended up receiving about a 0.9% increase. The budget had assumed a 1% increase, so about right on par with, with budget assumptions for state appropriations. And profit, and profit tax is going right on schedule. In fact, we may even have a little bit of upside there, a little too early to tell yet because of refunds, but we're watching that closely, but we think there could be some upside there. On the cost side, you'll note that we're actually below budget by about $800,000. Our, our vacancy savings in terms of positions, of budget positions that are not filled, were running slightly greater than planned. So plan was around 20 or so, and we're running about 25, a little higher for the month of September than August and July. The lion's share, those are all in the independent staff side, and a little bit in temporary positions. So that's, that's the lion's share of, of the month. The other thing that I'd point out for the board is on page four, deferred maintenance. This is your first chance to get a peek at the deferred maintenance fund, which now reflects the addition of 2.5 million to the fund as the board had approved with our budget. And you will see this at the very top, summary. So in total, 19.8 million has been, been funded to the deferred maintenance fund, and we have projects either completed or in process that add, add up to just under $700,000 shy of that number. So we have tremendous amount of projects that have been completed and a lot more that are, that are ongoing. The very bottom is kind of what's on deck next. We're currently in the planning phases for these projects that are on deck. The punchline here is that the amount of money that the board has funded is being fully utilized. If projects that are done, they're in progress, or that they're, they're, they're going to be done within the next year.
Go ahead, Diana.
Is that $80,000 for the Simcoa walkway, is that included in this?
It's not in this fund, it's in the campus repair maintenance.
Campus repair. Okay. Then, I forgot what I was going to say.
Any other questions for this? Any other questions? Okay. So, do we vote on this? No. Okay. All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Next, tab D, the facilities development report. VP Johnson again.
Great. Thank, thank you. Just a couple of large projects to point out. The firing range, the, the estimated official date is December 1st. We're just putting the finishing cut, just on as we speak. We're doing the final sealant of all, all the floors. We're doing the finishes of the walls, and the last part is the lighting. The, we're, we actually have lights that are specific to the firing range that have been special ordered, so those are, those are being done as we speak for that. I also point out a very large project, of course, that's still on that first page, the Energy Center Cooling Tower Replacement. The equipment has been ordered, and we are going to start that project in December. The equipment will be here on, here on site for that. Turning to the next page, page two, item 11, the LA Chemistry Hood Replacement. Again, it's a very large project. It took very close coordination with, with faculty, we're very appreciative of the close work that they've done, done with us. They're actually going to make those labs available the last two weeks of the semester for us. We give them a choice of, of the first two weeks or the last two weeks, so we can kind of squinch in all of this work to get it ready, and available for use at the start of winter semester. And that is going on, on schedule. We're very much appreciative of that. And then last but not least, to point out the bottom of page two, under campus repair maintenance, the Semcoa path, that is, I, I think that work is now going to be delayed until the spring because the, the county is still going through the finalization of the bid award process, and we're getting too late into the season, so that the path might not actually be done until springtime next year.
But they're not going to increase funds?
They are not going to increase it. No, no. So we are, we are, our cost is going to be just under $100,000 in total.
Okay. And I do have another question. Under, I say, on the same second page, exterior messaging signage, could you explain what that is?
Yes. We have been, so you might see these signs around institutions, it's electronic signage board and LED signage board. So this has been a difficult project, not in concept, but in acceptance by the township. So we have, we would not be allowed to place a sign in Ann Arbor Township. They explicitly prohibit those signs. So we have tried to find the optimal place, given the current zoning of our land in superior township. And the optimal place that gives us the best chance for approval, it's not yet been approved by the township, is actually replacing the sign as you enter for the Morris Lawrence Building. We currently have a fixed sign there that's just, just Washington Community College, and we're going to replace that. That's the proposed location to replace that fixed sign with an electronic signage board. Makes a lot of sense because we have about 100,000 visitors that come to this building, so we're able to use that signage to help communicate what's going on within Morris Lawrence, but more broadly with, with the college. Now, so we, we've done all the engineering work, done the design work. It's currently the, for the township, and it's going to have to receive some variances of acceptance, and we're hopeful that that's being, that that's going to be accepted.
Well, I, I'm happy to hear that. Visiting a lot of campuses throughout the state and out of state, you see a lot of these signs everywhere. And, you know, it would be really advantageous for us to have that, especially at that corner, because a lot of, you know, activities on that corner, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Angela.
So what specifically would the township would want to not have us to put up the sign? Is it because of the lighting? I mean, what, help me to understand why.
The main, the main opposition is the potential hazard of a large LED signage board that would have a, the impact of negatively impacting traffic and potentially cause accidents.
Because of people looking and trying to-
And so it's really important that the placement of that sign and the size of the sign, the sign, the size of the lettering, if, if we were to use it more like a bill, a billboard and have brilliant LED lights that could cause a distraction for motorists and for bicyclists. So they are going to ask us all, all of these questions. We're not doing any of that. We just want to have electronic signage board, like, like you said, that you've seen around. But, but they are going to ask us all of those questions.
Michigan has theirs, and so far, there's no issues.
Well, they didn't-
They tried to, but it didn't.
The U of M, I'm on the zoning board. And the U of M never, they don't have to meet zoning requirements.
Well, I know.
So that, I'll tell you, that big sign by the stadium would never get past the, get a barrier.
Hey, I'm just saying the theory of it though.
Oh, go ahead, Ruth. You have a question?
So how did Huron High School and Pioneer High School get theirs?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know. I, I, that's a really good question.
That's city, not township.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
All right.
Interesting.
That is interesting. Any other questions on the facilities report? All right.
We do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
On page one, under Advanced Transportation Center, it says resubmital? Is that?
Yeah. The, the cost of, of the building from the original cost-
Right.
And to now has gone up. It's, so originally was 5.9, now it's 7.9 million. And although we're not asking the state for any additional funding as part of the capital outlay request, since that project had been approved legislatively, not only as part of state funding, but the total cost of the project, we have to resubmit our request. We have gotten through all, all, all the state agency process. They've made a recommendation to the Appropriations Committee, and we're very hopeful within the next month that that will be legislatively approved.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
I'm sorry. One more question. You said that we are allocated 1.9% from the state. How does that compare with the other community colleges? Are we in the pack or above a bit?
We're, we're right near the very, very top. The, the state changed the funding allocation model this, this year to take into account those community colleges that, that don't have funding from the make-whole provisions for the personal property tax. So they actually allocated them more money. If you take out the impact of that allocation, we're at the very top.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. All right. Thank you for that. Moving on to the remarks of the Board of Trustees, would anybody like to comment? Go ahead, Ruth.
While we continue to congratulate the college for maintaining our enrollment in light of double-digit declines in other schools, I noticed in the, the last column, which is this year, we're beginning to catch up.
Yeah.
So it's not like we should applaud ourselves and go home and have a glass of wine. We still need work to do.
Yeah. No one's applauding.
Well, we continue to applaud. We always congratulate ourselves on how well we did in that decline. I'm saying, we've got to keep it up.
Well, that's well noted, but, you know, if you, if you keep up with MCCA and what is distributed to you electronically, you can see where, where we have to fight for, every community college has to fight to get whatever we can get.
Well, that's right.
So it's not really applause anywhere.
Any other remarks from board? Go ahead, Mr. Willocke.
Well, I would like to thank everybody for the moment of silence that they accorded us earlier tonight for my, my father's passing. Several of you have asked about services, and we, we will have a cremation, and Dad's remains will go to Machinaw Island to a family burial plot that we have there. And in May, in Traverse City, at Northwestern Michigan College, we'll have a memorial service at a date yet to be established. You're all invited, and love to see some of you there if you're able to make it to Traverse City. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
I just want to just say, real quick, myself and a few other people went to the Association of Community College Trustees National Conference in San Francisco last week. Without a doubt, I can tell you straight up, it was cold there. The only thing that was nice was the sunshine, but it was cold, just like here. But I, I went on the college tour, and there was, every, that bus was packed, was 31 people from all different community colleges throughout the state or country. And we went, our stop at this community college was totally different for us, because we went to the Chinatown Community College. It was so interesting. They have a student population, there, they have a student population of 20,000, and, but there's a lot of online and part-times, and they also have people, a lot of people who are there just to learn a language, a second language. The most interesting part about this trip was that the, the person who was our tour guide, he was dean, I can't remember what it was, but he was our tour guide on the bus, and he explained a lot of things. And then when we got to the facility, which is right downtown of San Francisco, they, there was the, another person, and she was a phys ed teacher, and she took us on a walking tour of, into market, the market area. And I, I tell you, we, we were just really, just taken back of what's going on there because we were right into Chinatown Marketplace. And the homelessness there is really else, is just something that you don't see here. We have it, but there it is so prevalent everywhere. And that was kind of a strange thing, too. What I wanted to say is that the cost of living is so expensive there that the colleges, the State Association of Colleges of, of higher ed, especially community colleges, they're proposing, the legislators are proposing, there's 115 community colleges in the state of California. And because it is so expensive to live in San Francisco, they're proposing to have housing for their students and faculty, because they can't afford to live even near San Francisco. So they're proposing that right now, and it looks like it may pass, so that these people can teach and go to school there without having to spend all that lot of money, and especially parking, parking is at a premium, you cannot find a place to park. Housing there is any, a, a one-bedroom or a efficiency starts at $3,000 a month. So I cannot complain about prices here, because it is so expensive there. That's how it is. The, another thing I wanted to say is that I don't want to beat our drum too hard, but I will, because I was in several sessions. In every session they attended, we were already heads above the other institutions. We are already there. And it was really surprising for me, because they're, they're, they're talking about things that we've been doing for a number of years. And it just was really something I couldn't say to anybody else, other than trustee Davis and, and President Alanco. It, it was really surprising this year of the amount of what was being presented, that we were already there and had been doing it for years. But otherwise, it was very informative. Other than being cold, I did take a lot of sweaters, because I figured it would be, being, being at San Francisco a number of times, so, but in any case, I, I enjoyed it, but I was happy to come home.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, I went along with the trip. It was, it was nice. It was real informative, and like trustee McKnight Morton said, that a lot of the, a lot of the information that was being presented, we're doing it, you know? So that's, like trustee Hatcher said, you know, applause. Yeah, we can applaud, but, you know, we still have work to do, because we definitely don't want to rest on your laurels because we're in the number one spot. I'm saying that we're in the number one spot, because someone's always looking to knock us down. So we want to stay there. Another thing, too, that really was a takeaway for me, is, you know, we're, we're in this cybersecurity age now, and, and it's very serious, very serious. Had the opportunity to listen to a gentleman's, I'm sorry, actually, two, two, two times in a session, there was a college that had a cyber security breach, or fraud, if you will, in the- there was a college that, um, had a cyber security breach or fraud, if you will, um, in their finance area. And, um, I won't really get too much into it, but the, but the whole bottom line is when you get a phone call and that, on the, the person on the other end of that phone call is claiming to be someone that you know within that department and they sound like that person, do, ask yourself, is this what I'm really understanding that you're asking me to do to do X, Y, and Z? You know, meaning put the check through or get a voucher or call so-and-so, have them not descend this or give me a new address for so-and-so because I'm out of town? Don't, don't fall, don't fall for it because a lot of times, um, that person on the other end is not, and I'm going to use you for example, VP, um, Bill Johnson. It may not be VP Bill Johnson, but it's going to be somebody who sounds exactly like him. So, um, just be careful, be very careful. The college that got, um, hit was through voice simulation and they were able to infiltrate their system, not the entire campus wide, but more, more, you know, specific area that dealt with their, with their banking and financing and such. And they had it so set up where they thought that they couldn't, um, reach out through their internet. And after so many hours later, the, the real person from the bank called and said, hey, you know, you have X amount of money, millions, being extracted from your bank account. Well, you know, that, that's kind of too late, so just be very careful because you never know who's in on the other line. And I know things happen. If, if you get a strange email, don't, don't open it, just delete it, whatever. You know, don't open the attachments. Just, just be very careful. Be very careful. Um, I also want to piggyback off of what, um, David Fitzpatrick said in his little moment of celebrityism with your father, um, former governor, I had mine as well when I was a toddler. I was with my godparents and we had gone to Bill Napp's and it must have been like for my birthday or something. And your father was in the back, the back section of Bill Napp's. And, um, someone said, you know, go, go shake his hand and he was so nice. And I can't believe I remember that. But, you know, things like that are so, so, are so impressionable. So, yeah.
He was Bill Napp's best customer.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was there every year on my birthday with my chocolate kid. But, yeah, he, he, that's one thing I do remember, that he, he just swung around his chair and he, you know, allowed me to approach him and he shook my hand. So, yeah.
Sounds like that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Go ahead, President Blanca.
Okay, well, I'd like to add to what, um, Trustee Davis was just talking about, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Um, to the board. And so what they're able to do, and something we have to think about because we have this on videotape, what they're able to do through technology is get the voice from any type of recording. And that's how they got, how they can duplicate someone's voice and make that call. So I think it's something we need to think about. And that's what we were talking about, you know, because we were, I was at one, that same, one of those presentations. And it was just, um, hearing that was, uh, really surprising. But when you think about it, why would it be? Because it's so sophisticated now and we make so many decisions based on what we knew and what was right then. And sometimes we need to revisit those. I mean, just, yeah, that was, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, sure.
Um, yesterday was a great day. I had the opportunity to attend the Kiwanis Club luncheon. And what was great about this is the Kiwanis Club of Ann Arbor gave $72,000 to our college, to students, scholarships given to our students, $72,000. There were 20 recipients of our students, all different types of recipients, all different ages, uh, good segment, you know, cross-function of our college. It referred new students as well as continuing students. And I would really like to thank Phil Snyder and Shayna Barker because that is an amazing job that you did to create this partnership where we're able to, um, you know, get this $72,000. And the Kiwanis was so happy to, um, support our, our students. The first time, they've given the money before, more towards four-year degree institutions. And so thank you for that opportunity.
That's wonderful.
Isn't it great? It was great. Um, also, uh, we've been named as a bicycle-friendly campus. You might not know that.
Do I know that? Thank you.
Okay, by the League of American Bicycleists. We are the only two-year college out of 48 colleges, um, that, only institute, community college out of 48 institutions of higher learning that got this designation. And for that, I'd like to thank Dale Petty and the Sustainability Committee that we have working for us. This weekend, last weekend, we had our, the first, uh, Gender and Sexuality Conference, another very successful initiative. I'm really proud that our college, um, was able to step out and, uh, to be a meeting place for this type of dialogue. We had over 100 people representing 13 community colleges from the state. And, um, the whole goal of this was for students, faculty, and staff to learn about and celebrate the LGBTQ communities on their campuses. Um, so there was, um, I'd like to thank Zach Baker, who's an employee of our Writing Center, and our English faculty member, Mary Mulligan, for, uh, for coordinating this function. VP Kimberly Hearns, another, uh, here was, uh, congratulations. She was recognized by the Eastern Michigan University Alumni Association, Black Alumni Chapter, as an elite member because of her accomplishments, hard work, and service to the community. Congratulations.
Bravo.
So October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we are very proud to again serve as a partner with the American Cancer Society in its, uh, annual Making Strides Against Cancer Walk. There was, uh, we've been doing this since 2012 and 160, $160,000 was raised at this event. Thank you Pete Leskovich and Rachel Barge for doing a great job. And of course, you know what we can't forget here? Our custodians and maintenance people, they had to set all this stuff up, take it down. So we can't, you know, while we're thanking all these people for, for all this, we, we have to look at what's behind it. And so, you know, that, that's a big job for them to do all these back-to-back conferences and all this stuff that's going on. So I want to make sure we thank them. Um, our Student Resource Center also in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month had a pink, they were, students were invited to decorate pink pumpkins. And I'd like to thank Cheryl, Carol Tinkle, Tinky, Tickle?
Tinkle.
Tickle?
Tinkle. Tinkle.
Tinkle, okay. Leslie Neot and Cheryl Finley from the Student Resource Center and Amy Carpenter and the Chambers Family Farms for donating the pumpkins. Wash and All Literacy again was on our campus for the annual gala and, um, it plays a vital role in helping, uh, adults succeed, please learn how to read. And, uh, Trustee Davis joined in at the benefit as well as other faculty and staff. Um, so I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff that participated in that event. And Free College Day, another successful day. Um, actually, it was probably our most, I think it was our most successful one. Um, we had 759 total registrations, 380 individual registrations, 59 walk-ins, and 38 classes with labs and open houses. And I'm looking at you, David, because you were one of the first speakers when we started doing this, what, five, six years ago? Six years ago, so?
Many years ago.
Yeah, right, you did. And, uh, and this year we had W4 Country Radio, who was onsite, uh, doing live, uh, remote interviews and broadcasts. Thank you, Trustee McKnight-Morton, for attending. And so it'd be really good if you, if you're able to make it on November 6th, there's, uh, at 7 o'clock in the Towesley Auditorium. Um, I'm sure this will be an outstanding lecture. You can read about it in On The Record, um, where we have Elizabeth Thoburn, who will give in, who will be giving a, uh, presentation on the walls that fall and the walls that remain. Um, Professor Thoburn grew up in East Germany before moving to the United States in 1985. And she'll, uh, talk about her experiences in growing up behind the Iron Curtain and the history of a post-divided, uh, post-war, sorry, Europe. And how this historical event and its impact are still relevant today. If you, if you have never heard Professor Thoburn speak, you have to know this. She is outstanding. Um, so I encourage the board, I know you're all very busy, but that will be very good.
I heard her, um, many years ago, she gave a presentation. Yeah, and it was really, really good.
Go thank it.
Her AV support is also great.
Thank you. Thank you.
So she'll have good audiovisual stuff to go with the lecture.
Did you hear that? The AV support's really great.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Are you, are you good? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Old Business, Tab E, the WCC Capital Outlay Plan. Um, VP Johnson, do you want to add anything here at this time?
I just, the board, at our last meeting, that there were two sections that the data was not yet complete. So Section D has now been updated with, uh, the data that VP Blakey and team have provided for Fall 19. Uh, so that's been updated and also in Section E, uh, on page one, item B, we were still working on the classroom utilization rates. Uh, and so we have finished that work and updated that section. Everything else is the same from the privacy.
Okay. All right, um, are there any questions? No. All right, go ahead and take the roll, Vanessa. What?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion for this?
I saw move.
Support.
I, no, I support.
Support, okay. Um, here, uh, hearing no discussion, go ahead and take the roll.
Chair Clumming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkens?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Vardy?
Yes.
Secretary Hager?
Yes.
Trustee McNeigh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Tab F, uh, the Recommended Revisions to Policy 2005. Uh, VP Blakey, do you want to add anything here?
Nope, there was no, no comments, um, when we talked about it at the last meeting.
All right, do I hear a motion to pass Tab F?
Some.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on Tab F? Any questions, comments concerned? All right, hearing none, go ahead and take the roll.
Chair Clumming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkens?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee McNeigh?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Tab G, the Class B Flooring Replacement Contract. Uh, VP Johnson, do you want to add anything here?
Nothing new.
Okay, nothing new. Uh, do I hear a motion to pass Tab G?
Some move. Support.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Clumming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkens?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee McNeigh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to New Business, Tab H, um, the Restoration of the Millage Proposal. So, uh, Mr. Barkov, do you want to add anything here?
Um, this one mill, proposed millage would not be a new additional millage, but instead of renewal and a restoration of existing millage that was passed in 2008, that's going to expire at the end of 2020. And the first year of this, um, millage that passed would raise about 17.5 million dollars. Uh, the proposal would be to put this language on the ballot for the March 10th, 2020 presidential primary election. Um, so this would be replacement of the existing millage as it expires.
Okay. Go ahead, any questions? Go ahead.
It expired, I'm sorry.
Angie and then Dave. Go ahead, yep.
So.
Could you explain that again, please?
Sure, but this existing millage will expire at the end of 2020. So this is a proposal to redo it so it continues for 10 years.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Good situation. Go ahead, Dave.
So just to clarify, I'm, of course, in favor of this and will be voting for it if it gets on the ballot. Um, so the, originally it was one mill.
Yes.
But Headley has forced us to roll that back pretty much every year.
Yes, it's, it's currently at .9718.
So it's, if the voters approve it, it'll restore it back to one mill.
Yes.
And then we'll start at a new, uh, rolling back based on Headley requirements.
Exactly.
But it will be a revenue increase over this year.
Yes.
If, if it gets, if, if it gets approved.
That's true.
Um, and I want to state that I'm in favor of it and I hope it does get approved. And I'll certainly vote for this when it comes back to us at the next meeting.
Does anyone want to make a motion at this meeting?
Um, I suppose we could. Does any, is anybody opposed to us bumping this up in, in, on the agenda? We'd have to modify the agenda.
Would it, doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter?
Um, the deadline for us to file with the county is mid-December, so we'll have to do it by next meeting.
I, I move that we amend the agenda to make this an action item tonight.
Support.
So we need a vote first on that motion.
Right.
And then we can vote on the main motion.
All right, so.
You don't have to do a roll call for that.
Just a voice.
Just to.
Just to.
Okay, so, but we do have to accolade it, right? Do we have to say all in favor?
We need a roll call on the main motion.
Okay.
But we just need a voice vote in order to, to bring it forward.
All in favor of modifying the agenda to move, um, the millage proposal to current business, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Um, so now.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So now it is, um, an active agenda item. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Because I'll, we'll, we'll move it to vote. Go ahead.
I just, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of it and I understand it, but reading it, it's very confusing. Is there any way to make it clearer?
You're telling the ballot language itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really statutorily driven.
Okay.
We've made it just about as clear as we can as a voter.
Okey-dokey.
It, it reads pretty much like the last one, the way most, you know, tax entities or, or some.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There are no Cliff Notes.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's all.
If I may, but Trustee Hatcher in the information campaign, when we're explaining it, we'll explain this later.
That's good, yeah, because I think it's, yeah, a little tricky.
All right, any other questions on this? Um, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, uh, accept this resolution submitting the restoration of the millage proposal to the March 10th, 2020 presidential primary election.
Support.
Support, okay. Um, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, um, go ahead and call the roll.
Chair Clumming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkens?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Vardy?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee McNeigh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, moving on to Tab I, the Energy Center Chiller. Uh, VP Johnson, do you want to add to this?
We, um, it is time that our two chillers in the Energy Center get a major overhaul. Um, the time to do that work, of course, is during the heating season and not the cooling season. So, uh, we have availed ourselves, uh, the college participates in a number of purchasing consortiums. These are public consortiums that all state agencies can participate in. Uh, and through that, uh, that purchasing consortium, US Communities, uh, Train was the winning bidder for this exact work to do these overhauls of our two chillers at a cost of 170,000 dollars.
Um, go ahead, Ruth.
Aren't, are the chillers for this building new?
They are not for this building. This, this building has its own chiller, which is.
Oh, but the ones for this building are new, though, aren't they?
They are. They're, uh, two years old.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Um, moving on to Tab J, the Public Safety Distributed Antenna System. VP Blakey, would you like to comment on this?
Thank you. So if you remember.
And so this antenna system would look at areas that are high, with high population, and would put antenna amplifiers in so that those radios would receive signals. That would be for our law enforcement, but any first responder that comes to campus.
Any questions on this? All right, moving on to tab K. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
When this comes back, change the word amply to amplify in the recommendation.
Okay.
And, of course, I'll vote for it when it comes back.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to tab K, the recommendation for a new program. VP Hearn, you want to comment on this?
Just that we've been adding health programs that are, are a lot more nimble to provide a variety of career paths for students who are interested in field, in a field of health. This is a small certificate, that's only 17 credits, but it has become a career path for students to move into even higher-paying jobs in the field of healthcare. And so there's some information there about current pay. Dean Greaves worked closely with our partner, IHA, to develop the program, and they've been working with us in anticipation to be able to hire students who come out of the program. Medical assisting is in very high demand as a career, especially in Washinaugh County. So we're hoping that this will be a fruitful program for our students.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ruth.
Am I correct in saying that there are nine health certificates with this one? Does this one make nine total certificates now?
Yes.
Okay. And there are either 79 or 80 in the college certificates?
It sounds pretty close.
Okay. Because one document said 79, one said 80, so I was wondering where the extra one was, but never mind, we'll talk. I found in my experience that these certificate programs in health science get students in, and then they want more. And they're very important for that. The one-year programs, the certificate programs, allow students to get a taste of healthcare professions, and then they very often want more, so I think it's a great idea to have those.
Go ahead, Dave.
A question, will this addition of this certificate program enable us to increase enrollment, or is it just recognizing classes that we already, I mean, are we going to see increased enrollment potentially because of this?
It should be a mix. One of the things that we have at the colleges, a lot of students who are interested in healthcare programs, but they, so they're already here, attempting to get in one of our other healthcare programs, and they kind of swirl around a lot. And so what we've been trying to do is make sure we have more programs that meet those needs. So we should see some enrollment increases, but it may be students who are already here who'll find the correct path for themselves, because maybe one of the programs we offer right now is not a good fit. So, so it may be a wash, but it all depends.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to tab L, the recommendation to discontinue a program. VP Hearn again, do you want to comment on this?
So three-plus-one programs that are, these three-plus-one programs that are presented here are presented for discontinuation because these articulation agreements with these schools have expired, and there's not been any desire to, to renew them.
No students have participated?
Not really, yeah. So we've been evaluating which programs are more valuable than others.
All right, Daven?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to tab M, revising the scheduled monthly board meetings. And this is, this is marked as an action item for me, is this, is that right? Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for this recommendation. Anybody want to move this?
Sure, November 19th, I move the revision to the 2019 schedule of monthly board meetings.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion on this? We're okay with moving the monthly board meeting and retreat? We're good?
Now I've got to go to my calendar, rearrange everything.
Yeah, got to rearrange everything, okay. All right, hearing no other comments, go ahead and call the roll.
Chair Plammet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Minkin?
Yes.
Secretary Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Murray?
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
All right, all in favor of adjournment? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, reading adjourned.